Order the city council meeting of October 8, 2024. I've asked Judith Gregory if she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Thank you, Judith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Judith. Can we start with the roll call of officers, please?
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Westwood? Ronnie?
Here.
Yes.
Conley? Stupin?
There.
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Greg.
Miller?
Yeah.
Ronnie?
I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the September 10th.
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the return of our two missing council members from last week And just to confirm, that's all we have here is September 10th. Is that correct?
Yes, you'll have the other. I move to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2024.
One second.
for health reasons. I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie and a second from Councilmember Keith. We appreciate you not sharing, but we're also happy to have you back. But as has been mentioned, the meeting was done in an hour and a half last time, so you Any discussion on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. two need to make sure to.
I'll try to keep.
Clearly, clearly, it's you two dragging the meetings out.
Conley?
Yes.
I will not ramble on and on.
Daniel?
That's you, Doug.
I have the same.
Keith?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented this time.
Miller?
Yes.
This was not last meeting.
No, this wasn't the last one?
No.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. No, it was September 10th.
Oh, yes. One second.
And even though I was absent, I was actually online, so.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley and a second from Councilmember Daniels. Yes, you were.
Yeah, I didn't go through.
Ronnie?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Stupin?
Boy, I don't have my tea sheet by me.
Yes, sorry.
I brought it wrong.
Before we take a vote, is there any discussion? All right. Mayor's report, oh, actually, this is the part I want to have this open.
Yes.
Councilmember Keith?
The warrant payable. The resolutions 3667 and 3668 actually fell under public works, not under county
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion for warrants payable.
I move to approve warrants payable in the amount of $625,977 and 25 cents.
committee.
All right. I have a motion to amend, to put items A and B under C, move them to D.
I would second.
I have a motion of Councilmember Ronnie and a second from Councilmember Conley. Do I have?
I second.
I have a second. Any discussion on that? Let's do a quick roll call vote on the amendment. Any comments at the table?
One of the payments was for $317,361 to Wilson Brothers Construction for from water
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
project phase two, three. So it's a payment for that, so that's almost half of it. And then there was another payment, I believe, in here for around $100,000 for garbage.
Sure, here's the word. From garbage? Public services?
Where was that?
I thought that was $47,000.
I'm sorry.
Great West Engineering was the other.
Maybe it was Great West Engineering, I'm sorry. I know there was another $100,000 one in there, I can't find it now.
Pretty sure it was Great West.
It was Great West, yes, you're correct, yes. So, yeah, so the bulk of our budget this month has been spent on projects.
And I was curious, the $1,500 to train that K-9, is that an ongoing or just a one-time, one and done?
I can't speak to that. Lonnie, do you know, I do know that any of the K-9-related expenses were not going to be from the general fund.
And that, that expense came from the drug forfeiture fund.
Okay, that was the drug forfeiture.
But I don't know if it's like a yearly thing, an annual training, I'm not quite sure.
I've seen several throughout the last year, so.
And he's younger, so I don't know if it's.
Rens is quarterly.
That would be a great question.
Well, I've only, I've only seen medical.
And that's what it was last time, was, was that bill that came from the forfeiture fund. Unfortunately, the forfeiture fund continues to be repopulated, so.
No.
It'd be nice if it wasn't, but. All right.
Yes, and I did find Great West Engineering $101,655, so. And there again, that's for different projects and applications.
And, and just for public information, for those who may not be aware, those are available in the lobby in the little basket on the side. You don't even have to come in and talk to somebody to come in and look at those whenever you like. The public is always welcome to come in and look and ask questions if there are any.
And the public services was $49,000. I knew it wasn't, wasn't $100,000. I apologize.
Any other questions or comments from the table? I think if my, I believe it was Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Ronnie that signed those today.
Yes.
Thank you for signing them.
Thank you.
Any other observations or questions that you had come up, Councilmember Miller?
Actually, Julie was able to answer three or four questions I had, since I'm relatively new. Some things were pretty obvious to her and she enlightened me.
Excellent. Again, thank.
She always does.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you both for that. If there are no other comments at the table, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right, there's a pizza on the table. No, no, I'm sorry.
Exactly, too.
Mayor's comments. Not, not a lot to report this week. I went to the municipal conference last week. It was interesting because the sessions that I went to didn't necessarily deliver that which I was hoping to get to specifically. Focus of, large focus of what I was looking at was funding sources and affordable housing and kind of some of what the, the others municipalities are doing. But having said that, as always, there was a lot of additional conversations and presentations, specifically stuff that's coming up in front of the legislature that they're revisiting, some of the things that are impacting not just us, but all the municipalities across Montana, the limitation of the one-half, the rate of inflation over the last three years as all our, our budgets can grow by and a couple of other things. So it was, it was a worthwhile adventure, even though the things that I thought I was going to get when I went, it's not necessarily what I came home with. So as, as the opportunities come up on those topics, I'll share more on that later. Sidewalks, they started doing the list last week on Tuesday and they started to get in this morning, and they will continue. For the public, this is the streets along Broadway. We identified earlier in the year that a significant part of our problem in the unevenness was a byproduct of a water project that the city took on several years ago, and those panels are at a different level than the adjoining panels. And if you're interested and want to go out and spend about a half an hour with a little clicker in your hand, you can count how many people you trip and almost plants. And so not only is it, is it a positive taste for our city, but hopefully it's a, it's a good step that will help to avoid us being involved in a lawsuit. And even if we do end up in a lawsuit, the first thing they do is, what have you done to mitigate the problem? And so we'll be able to speak to it that we've done something. Depending on how long the weather holds out, we may get that done this year. This is a good time of year. If weather intervenes, we'll shoot to have that done before the, the season starts in full next year. We've, we've hired out the lifting of the panels and the city has acquired a grinder to kind of go in and do the finish work on those. So hopefully that'll be smooth sidewalks up and down both sides of Broadway. So thank you, because that's your reserve cash dollars were a significant part of making that happen. Stormwater, most of the main lines are in, they're, they're going through and putting in the drains now. The asphalt is scheduled for next week, hopefully, that the contractors are going to be in. Focus on getting those, those on the main streets, specifically Broadway, done sooner rather than later. However, at this point, it does not look like the weather's going to interfere and we should be able to get that done for that. Now, that is separate from the streets project that we are hoping to take on next year. By the way, had a, had a meeting today with, with the Fed on the EDA grant. They came in with a list of 18 or 19 check items that, that we need to go back and, and do some rewording and billing. However, I anticipate those will all be done this week and, and we'll revisit that with Great West, who is our, is our partner and helped us present and prepare that grant. Our deadline for answering those is the end of the month, so I don't anticipate a problem with that. But I don't, also don't anticipate that we'll get an official award letter until sometime after that deadline. Currently, we are still planning as if we are going to be able to take on that road project next year. And for those of the public who may not have been here, that's north side of town and east side of town, kind of tied to the first phase of stormwater. And that is pavement, curb, gutter, real streets. So hopefully we'll get that done for kind of the north end of town next year because we've gotten all the digging underneath the streets done. So I, I mentioned that now because I'm tying it to the asphalt for the next week or so, which is just leveling out kind of the work that we've done from this year's work. But as I said, don't confuse that because there's even more exciting things to come in the future. Have a meeting on Thursday at the airport. We have a, a private group that is interested in making a significant donation for the maintenance of the airport, basically putting a paved cap on top of the runway that will hold us over until such time as, as we can get adopted into the federal program and do that. It really falls under the maintenance issue, so we, we don't have a role as a city because the contract that's currently in place still has accounting with that. Having said that, I'm also hoping that we'll be able to take advantage of that conversation to finalize something that we can bring to council and, and get approved going forward on, on the airport. So I just wanted to mention that that's Thursday. I think that's all the updates I have, unless there's anything else council specifically would like to ask about, I'll start on this end. Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Conley?
No.
Ronnie?
Actually, yes, I have a yes. Is there a timetable to demolish?
Bastion property.
Bastion property.
So the, the answer is no, we have requested the RFP to go out. So the same company that, that did the bidding for the remediation portion, which is bad stuff, is also handling the demolition portion. However, we have been asked to not start actual demolition until such time as the, until we get the letter of funding from the Feds. They told us that would be by the end of the month. They lied, but we anticipate, we anticipate it soon. So as soon as we get that, we will be moved forward. We actually, the remediation part, my understanding is they've already selected a bidder or have a recommendation. I don't, do you know, Lonnie, was that something that, will we as a council, will council need to authorize me to accept those bids or is where we've outsourced that, is it completely done and that's not our control?
Not quite sure.
We'll look into that. The remediation part I, I know is DNRC, so it probably, probably does not involve us, but there's possibility the demolition part will. But that RC is going out. We did specifically, I did get a chance to do a final walkthrough. I went through, and I don't remember, this was before the Mass, I'm not very sure this information, that we did the walkthrough with the senior center and with the S V S, and there was nothing in there that was of interest. There was one trinket that will be in the, in the seasonal fundraising at the senior center that I think is quite a cool little knickknack that I hope gives them lots of money.
And I assume that the Bastions did the first walkthrough?
They, they had already indicated on multiple occasions that they had everything they wanted. When we did our walkthrough, we understood that we had a very high level of confidence that they, they were done because it was really nothing left.
Yeah, it was nothing.
So, yeah. The, the RFC for the demolition, we have specifically requested the bidders articulate what they want to do, specifically the things that were of value was the roofing, the siding, and the doors inside. But basically what they were going to do to repurpose the materials from that will be part of the, the bid consideration process.
Okay, good.
And I will get a final answer. Lonnie, if you will make a note that to double check, we'll find out if that's something I need to bring to council to approve once we're done or if we're already done with it. I don't want to burden council if it's not necessary, but I certainly want to dot the i and cross the t if it is.
So did it go out for bid then?
They, I have not seen that, that go out, but I, we, we have assigned them to do that. We have, I have made the designation to have them do it. I just wanted to cover the bases and make sure we're doing everything right.
And we have no idea how much those bids will come in at?
We don't. There was some, some numbers that were initially floated, but I don't know how much stock I put into them until the companies come and do. What'll, what'll happen is they'll do what's called a bid walkthrough and all the companies will come out and do that. We did have several people who reached out either to me or to our planning department or to the front office and indicated, and we've requested that they be included on that list so that they're in awareness, but it'll also be published. I haven't received notice that it's been published yet, so I'm guessing it has not. Thank you for the question. All right, Councilmember Stupin?
Actually, a question.
Okay.
Do you have, I'll, I'll give you both of them. Do you have an update on the city planner position, assistant planner? And are there, is anything happening? Is there any update on the property adjacent north to Rocky Fork?
So two separate conversations. So the assistant planner, the interviews took place last week. I was not involved with those, I was at the municipal conference. My understanding is it was unanimous decision from those who were involved in the interview panel, which did include representation from the planning board, as well as Brian, who's been doing a lot of that work. But it was unanimous decision. I understand that we did get a confirmation back today, so we do have a signed acceptance. So we got that acceptance letter today. However, that individual does not start until the 23rd.
October?
So of, of, yeah, the 23rd of October because, because they had a, a pre-planned amendment elsewhere. So, so it'll be the 23rd of October. I will also add that right now I'm holding off on the full-time staff position a little bit more because there's, I want to see what the potential that this person, as I sat down and articulate what it is we need and what parts, I want to see what this person is able to, to pick up. By the way, the person does have a name, yes?
Callan, his last name.
Callan, and he also has a last name.
Callan from Laurel.
From, yeah, and he, he's from Laurel, but, but he was quite okay with the fact that, that this is going to involve a lot of evening meetings, so there's a lot of evening meetings that, that I've been running and running the logistics board that ultimately he'll be able to handle. And as, as, as we feel that it's appropriate, we will start to wean a little bit of our dependency on W W C or that front desk planning staff. But we're, we're setting him up for success, and so we'll make those decisions when it's the appropriate time to do so.
His last name is Renner, Callan Renner.
That's a cool sounding name.
Yeah, it sounds like a superhero.
I can't believe you forgot that. And, and then the second question, oh, the property north, so those conversations are still happening. I got an email or a text message, I guess is more appropriate, from the property owner indicating that he had gotten a, a response back from the appraisal on that, which, which was kind of the next step before we resumed filling out the application with W W C. And I have not had an opportunity, it's been an interesting day, but I've not had an opportunity to follow up with him. But, but that conversation, that conversation is still ongoing.
Okay.
By the way, the thinking, just by way of information, they still have to be done as two separate projects as, as from funding things. But the, the anticipation and the goal is that we're going to get the, we're going to get the Rocky Fork in knockdown this week, but we are not racing immediately to the next day, turn that into a park or something. We'll do some public input and discussion on that. But I would also like to have an inclination of, are we talking about this big of a project or are we talking about this big of a project? Because I think that will open up some interesting opportunities for us. Did, did I get all the?
Yep, you answered my questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you.
He doesn't want to drag it out.
Yeah, there we go. All right, so at this point, what we'll do is we will go to public comment. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on anything that's on the agenda tonight. Two things I'd like to add to that, at the end of the meeting, there will be an opportunity for the public to address council on anything within council's jurisdiction. And also, when we get into the action portion of the agenda, there is a public hearing aligned with the ordinance. So if you have comments on that, if you'd please hold them until that point in time. And as we go through and look at the individual resolutions, I will try to provide an opportunity basically so that, that the public has an opportunity to hear what the discussion is before there's, there's public input. And we'll start with folks in the room on those and then we'll open that up to online and ideally if you can turn your camera on or raise a hand or something that indicates you're interested, then we'll go ahead and leave those questions. But at this time, this is just generally an open public comment for anything that is on the agenda. I'll go ahead and open that public hearing, looking through the room once, looking through the room twice. If you'd stand up and state your name, the general vicinity of where you leave, if you'll address your comments to me, the chair, everybody else eavesdrops and listens.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
It's mostly a question of, is my understanding that on the agenda for tonight was disbanding the pool committee?
Ah, I will, so, so by way of information, so this is not a public discussion time, that is outdated information. So in the committee meeting today, they reviewed the resolution and then next time they'll talk about it in the second half of the meeting and then two weeks after that is when we'll officially disband it and have you guys give a presentation on the pool at that point in time.
Okay, and then the idea that I discussed with you would be proposed at that point?
That, that has already been proposed, but if you would like to add a comment, they're eavesdropping and they, if you're welcome to add that.
Well, I served on the pool committee for a number of years that we raised a million dollars for the pool and saw all the issues with the pool. So we were quite concerned that in disbanding the pool committee, there was no place in the, in the city to raise issues on the pool if you had them, other than with the director or the director of public work. And so the idea that I'm proposing is that you put the pool under the park board so that that, they would have purveyance over that as well and people, if they have issues, could take it to them that they don't feel comfortable taking to the directors of the pool. And you're going to talk about that?
Yeah.
Somewhere down the road.
Thank you. So, so we, we actually already did talk about it in the committee meeting and everybody liked it. So I feel comfortable in answering, I feel comfortable in, in answering that. I always, I always get a little bit concerned starting the discourse because then when you have to rein it in, it's so, but, but yes, so it was, it was raised and thank you.
And, and what committee?
That was public works committee.
Oh.
So that was the one just before this, actually.
Oh.
Missed it by this month.
Oh, no.
It was exciting, too. All right, any other comments from the, from the room? All right, going to online, any questions or, or public comments, I'm sorry, on the agenda? I'm looking for hands or cameras, going twice, going three times. We'll go ahead and close the public comments on the agenda. I was going to see if I could do it this way. All right, that takes us to the action portion of the agenda. I will entertain a motion on ordinance 911, Second Amendment.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 911, Second Amendment, camping on city-owned land. Second hearing.
Second, and just for the official, will you go ahead and read the full ordinance?
The full ordinance, an ordinance to amend, clarify, and revise the red lodge overnight parking and use of city-owned lands, including dedicated parks and right-of-ways for overnight camping, Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 9 of the Red Lodge Municipal Code, and revise the penalties for non-compliance.
And again, that was second reading. I have a motion from Councilmember Stupin?
I can't from.
Oh, and a second from Councilmember Daniels. I apologize for not catching that. Any discussion at the table before we open the public comment?
I do have one thing, and I, I probably should have caught this last time, but that third whereas seems like it, there should be something after that. So a balance between the protection of residential properties and, am I just missing something?
Whereas the city council recognizes the delicate balance that must be maintained in a resort community between the protection of residential properties?
Just between, so they're talking about.
Between, between one item?
Okay, right.
I, I, I leave that to council's discretion. I will say that it does have to have two consecutive readings unchanged, so if there's, if, if council chooses to amend, that's certainly their prerogative tonight. Just know that that will become the first reading and there will be a, a second, second reading.
I think what it's trying to say is between residential properties in a resort community is.
I think it's one, no, it is. Property and another property.
You're right. It's between. I, I think it's like we're in a resort community, but you still have to maintain the balance of protecting our residential properties.
Maintaining or protection of residential properties within a resort community.
City-owned, I don't. Must be maintained in a resort community.
So if we change one word?
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it should be something else out there, but I don't.
Yeah, just based off of the fact it's missing the semicolon and or a period at the end, something got cut.
Yeah, I feel like it should recognize the delicate balance that must be maintained to protect the residential properties within the resort community.
I'm curious if we go to the minutes that, that have what was presented last time? Actually, it won't because it's not the, it's not the meeting.
Do you go to 9/11?
Lonnie, can you look very quickly to see if, if, if what we've got is a technicality and this is not printed correctly?
Yeah, I'm going to look at the one that's online. Yeah, the 9/11.
I, I have zero objection to starting the process over and doing it right.
I'd rather do it right.
I'd rather do it right.
Right now. Because you didn't, you didn't. You didn't, we didn't leave anything in that sentence, so it, it.
So the third whereas. We changed nothing in there.
No, that's not true. So 9/11 amended, city council recognizes the delicate balance that must be maintained in a resort community between the protection of residential property and reasonable expectations to use privately-owned property. So the reason that was removed is because the original ordinance also, though it's supposed to be just about public right-of-ways, city-owned land, also identified how you use private commercial property. And so we removed that and then just didn't do the work to actually make it ready and rewrite. So I do think that that's something we should go back and address.
I agree.
Is, is it as simple as striking the third whereas?
I think so.
And, and then having a repeat reading in two weeks?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, yeah. Again, frankly. So I move to remove the third whereas.
There's a motion to strike the third whereas? Pardon?
And the and above it, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And the and above it?
Yes, after the second whereas?
Yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other? Actually, it won't because it's not the, it's not the meeting. Can, Lonnie, can you look very quickly to see if, if what we've got is a technicality and this is not printed correctly?
Yeah, I'm going to look at the one that's online.
Yeah, the 9/11.
I have zero objection to starting the process over and doing it right.
I'd rather do it right.
I'd rather do it right.
Because you didn't, you didn't, we didn't, we didn't leave anything in that sentence, so it, whatever.
So the third whereas, we changed nothing in there.
No, that's not true. So 9/11 amended. City council recognizes the delicate balance that must be maintained in a resort community between the protection of residential property and reasonable expectations to use privately-owned property.
Ah.
So the reason that was removed is because the original ordinance, also though it's supposed to be just about public right-of-ways in city-owned land, also identified how you use private commercial property. And so we removed that and then just didn't do the work to actually make it ready and rewrite. So I do think that that's something we should go back and address.
I agree.
Is, is it as simple as striking the third whereas?
I think so.
And then having a repeat reading in two weeks?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, yeah. Again, frankly.
So I move to remove the third whereas.
There's a motion to strike the third whereas. Pardon?
And the and above it, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the and above it?
Yeah, after the second whereas.
Yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ronan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? What I'm going to do before we move forward with this is I'm going to open this up to public comment and then we'll come back.
Okay.
And if you'll keep me on this and make sure that there's a motion there. Is there any to comment before we open up public comment?
One comment that, when we were working on this was that there are drivers that come into town that are sleepy and rather than have them continue on, if in fact they were to park and sleep in their camper overnight, the police chief said that they would not harass them because it's against the ordinance, that they would use some judgment.
Yeah, they always have discretion and I'm aware. And right now, it's, I believe, it's actually not allowed in the public ordinance, this is in the public right-of-way.
Correct.
But what they do is they advise and safety is important, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I know there was some public comment as well as, as to whether there was a responsibility of the city to provide someplace like that. I feel comfortable with, with how the police department is handling that. But as I had opportunity to listen in on other communities and see how other communities were handling and addressing this, I will share that I, I felt very comfortable with the approach that council has elected on it because there are a lot of problems out there that it doesn't mean the city needs to get into that business of resolving that. We do water, we do sewer, we do trash, we do police, we do fire. And there was some discussion about whether there would be, maybe they should look at it from a zoning standpoint to see if we could open it up so that private, private owners could do that. But the simple, the simple takeaway is that it wasn't a bad answer to say that that's not the business the city is in. And so I, I felt very comfortable with that. So and as I, as I sat in and listened and observed as I was driving back and forth, I just, I just had a, council got it right. So I, I'm happy with you guys on that. All right, was there any other comments before I go open up the public comment? All right, so this is a public hearing on ordinance 9/11, now in its first reading. Lonnie, am I doing that right?
Mm-hmm.
In its first reading. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Go to the room.
We have a logistics question.
If you'd step to the podium, please, and state your name. And thank you.
Just have a question. How are the officers going to know if this is the first, the second, or the third of it?
Thank you.
Is something going to pop up on the screen? Because we're going to be doing this at night, I'm assuming, and?
This is, this is public comment, so I'm hearing and it's being noted.
Is that a good question you're saying?
It's an excellent question, thank you. Is that the right answer? That's an excellent question, thank you.
Well, I'm just curious how they're going to enforce it and know how many of these people have done. Always happy when I ask a good question, so thank you very much.
Any other comments from the room? All right, going to online. Again, this is a public hearing on ordinance 9/11, now in its first reading as presented. Going twice. Going three times. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Any further discussion at the table?
Glad to call, thank you.
You're welcome.
Reading through to make sure that there's?
No other thing?
No other call? Things that we may have missed. Like we've worked in this thing a lot, a lot.
Can I just ask a quick question? If we do want planning board to revisit zoning for RV parks within the city limits of Red Lodge, how does council go about doing that? Does it go through land use and planning? Or does council just pass a resolution saying we would like planning board to have clearer guidelines for zoning for RV parks within the city limits of Red Lodge?
Given some of the experiences we had last year where planning board felt that they were sent off to work on certain issues and then found out that they were not what council was really interested in doing, I would suggest that probably a resolution stating, please revisit and look at this, is probably the safest way. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No, that tracks. And I think that would probably be done through land use and planning to create that.
Because I think a lot of the feedback we were getting from people on the camping within the city limits is that there are no real RV parks within the city limits. And people want to stay in the city limits in their camper so they don't have to drive drunk and they can just walk downtown and eat and have a couple of drinks and go back to their camper.
And truly, it is a whole dynamic of how people travel now.
Yeah.
It's more and more common, the more and more you see it. And I think that it makes sense for our community to embrace that but in a logical way with proper criteria and keep it in the private sector.
Yeah, I don't really?
And it doesn't have to be the local government.
Right.
But right now, we have no ability for, I mean, no clear guidelines for a private entity to come in and say, I want to build an RV park.
I believe they have to be approved by the state first.
They do. They do, but it would help if we had it zoned.
The first zone.
Because right now, we have no zoning for it.
And I'm not sure we do or do not have zoning for RV parks. So I was, that was one of the things that came up today that I was going to double check.
Revisit.
Yeah, you can get rid of it.
I think, I think let's limit the discussion on that right now because it's not direct. But I think I, what I'm hearing is that land use and planning will, will take that up for discussion and put together something to bring to full council.
Perfect, thank you.
So Councilmember Daniels, did we stall there long enough for you to read through that again and make sure that you're happy with it in larger font?
Yeah, well, I read through it the first time, too, and I missed it, so.
We're good.
And I guess in one sense, you could be nitpicky and say it's a whereas, but let's, I'd rather, I'd rather do it right. So we'll go ahead with this first reading. Hearing no other comments at the table, let's go ahead and do a roll call, please.
This is on the amendment?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a roll call on the amendment to strike the third whereas and the and preceding that third whereas.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, the motion to amend passes. Any further conversation before we move forward with a vote on the original motion? Hearing none, let's have a motion on ordinance 9/11, first reading.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion passes and it'll be back for an encore showing in two weeks. I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3430, Second Amendment.
I move to approve Resolution 3430, Second Amendment. A resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge, Montana, to adopt the 2024 City of Red Lodge fee schedule for the Community Development Department.
I'll second.
I have a second, or excuse me, a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Tupin. Discussion at the table, please.
Thank you, Brian and Hannah. Yeah, thank you, Brian and Hannah, for putting in the work. And truly, I think that he has everyone's best interest in mind when doing so. And it does help consolidate our fees to make it easier and more streamlined for not just our public, but also our city staff.
All right, rather than formally opening this up, I'll just look to see if there's any hands in the audience of anybody who'd like to comment on this. Looking for online as well? All right, seeing no interest in public comment on that, I'll just go ahead and move forward with a roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion for Resolution Number 3660.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3660. A resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge, Montana, to adopt the 2024 City of Red Lodge applications for the use of city-owned land permits for large and small events.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Conley. I will note that in the packet this time, the Exhibit A and Exhibit B for large event and small event, it appears that the Exhibit A was not included in this week's packet. However, it was in last week's packet, so I feel comfortable moving forward with that. So I'll start that. I understand that there were potentially some motions to amend the resolution before passing.
Yeah, so we would like to amend the resolution for now therefore be resolved. Park facility fees shall be earmarked for parks' project improvements. We would like to have that removed. Specifically because that is not how things have currently been handled and it just goes into development funds. So it is not going into park projects improvements. And from what we understand at the city staff level is that would be a bit of an accounting headache as well. So rather keep those funds a little bit more liquid or, I guess not liquid, but flexible. The second would be the City of Red Lodge reserves the right to approve or deny an application. That's already pretty clearly stated in ordinance 960, so we felt it was just redundant and unnecessary to have it in there.
So I have a motion to strike the third and fifth paragraph under now therefore be resolved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to amend by Councilmember Tupin and a second by Councilmember Daniels. Any conversation regarding the amendments at the table?
As long as you're doing those, you can bold that second whereas.
You can do what?
Bold the word whereas.
Bold it.
Lord.
That's fine.
Sorry. I noticed that Chris Ives was letting it go.
My version, I didn't have it, but.
Do you, do you accept that bold as part of your amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll lump all three amendments in there.
Hang on. Yeah, keep her through it, make sure there's nothing else, guys. Feel like there's common.
It helps that our, our school teacher is back in schoolteacher mode. So as the red pen comes out. All right, hearing no further discussion on the motion to amend, let's have a roll call on the motion to amend.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes. Back to the original motion. Any further conversation before we do a roll call vote? All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on Resolution Number 3660.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I forgot to look up and see if there were hands. Resolution, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3664.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3664. A resolution of intent to obtain preliminary approval to proceed with further evaluation of a potential land exchange.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Conley, a second by Councilmember Tupin. Discussion at the table.
There was a, a comment from the public that there were no addresses regarding this, that vacant land doesn't get an address. So it either has sewer or septic approved. So I don't know whether we should have a legal description in here or not.
So the, the, this particular process, what we're doing is just saying, yes, Mayor, you may proceed and look into this, which will include getting a legal description, getting the broker report, the evaluation. This is just basically getting an approval before we start that process.
Gets you started.
And it is identified with Exhibit A, so that's helpful, even though it doesn't necessarily have an address. But it's never going to have an address, so. I mean, eventually, someday, yeah.
Discussion at the table?
I have a question. I think last year, the property owner was, sends a letter asking to have a sign removed from the property. I'm just wondering if that's happened or not.
I'm, I'm not aware of what you're, I, I know that there was, I remember a year ago that there was a sign that was posted on that property. I remember confirming that it, maybe it was even this year. I don't remember, but I, I was paying attention, so it must have been this year, maybe during the primary season. And I remember going out with a, with a GPS and confirming that it was not on city land, at which point city had no say in it. It was on private property, which people are allowed to post signs on the private property. Am I thinking the same thing or am I thinking something else?
I think that's the one. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that it was compliant with like the advertising or something.
The only, the only, the only awareness I have was a political sign. And we had our attorney look at it. And it's basically, it was on private property. It was not, if it had been on city property, there would have been an issue, but we confirmed it was not on city property and therefore we had no jurisdiction.
And political signs are excluded from signs?
I don't think it was a political sign. It was on a truck. And I, I remember Courtney sent the letter.
We have?
I don't remember, I have recollection because I wasn't here.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the property owner here. We could just ask him.
Well, yeah, well, we'll, 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 my question is, so this is something that happened previously.
I think it was Courtney that were in there.
And well, if it was Courtney, then certainly it was.
Yeah.
And so help me understand you, so there was a sign on it and did we send them a letter?
I believe that's what happened. Maybe the property owner can.
Okay, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll go to that in a moment. Does it, does it factor into this conversation?
Yeah, that's my curiosity, does that issue relate with this? Only because they're the same property owners.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if it does or not.
Okay, that's fair. Looking for additional conversations at the table? All right, I will go ahead and open this up to public comment at this time if we have anybody who'd like to ask. And I do note that we have the property owner, their question. You may or may not choose to respond, your preference as to whether the question is pertinent or relative or not. But if any of you'd like to speak, you're welcome to do so this time. Any other comments from the public? Okay?
That touches. I was the one that asked Sandy for some information. And there is exhibit A, but there are no road names or anything. So from the point of view of the average bear, I have no idea where the property is and I'm curious.
Okay. Thank you, that was an excellent question. I'll make sure during the comment that we, that during the, when it comes back to the table, we make sure that's clarified. Any other comments from the room? Any questions or comments online? All right, hearing none, we'll bring this back. So again, this is just a resolution of intent to say, yes, start the process. This particular piece of property is up at the top of Brewery Hill, on the south side of Brewery Hill, next to, Mountain View, am I getting the right name? Next, adjacent to the Mountain View Apartments. And what happens is several years ago, the road moved from the old location, where it joined up with Brewery Hill, to the new location. And this is a parcel that exists between where the road previously was and where the road currently is. It is currently, well, it's currently still designated as part of the airport by virtue of the fact that that's what's on file with the FAA. The city council has passed a resolution or has passed an ordinance map that does not include that parcel. It has not yet been adopted and accepted by all parties involved. There's a county and another municipality involved that all have to unilaterally agree on everything. But it is the intent of all parties that that will be chopped off and no longer part of the airport, which means that we now have a piece of city land that we can look at using for the city's benefit. There's a, there's a parcel in the, in the middle of that that made all sorts of sense back when the old road was there. It makes less sense now. But that landowner also has an interest in a piece of land that is adjacent to land that he owns that is within the city's realm. And so this is basically just a permission to start the discussion and looking into it. There are several things listed in the resolution that all have to be positive and yes or have to, that basically we have to look at to determine if it's, the rules state that the city cannot lose on the deal. And so this is, before we go too far down that road, we officially start the process with a resolution of intent.
That you could where it is.
Close enough.
You have a decent idea to put it here.
Now I can find the map.
Okay, because I could probably point it out over here too after the, after council.
Yeah. And if there's anybody in the public who has an interest and wants to reach out, I'd be happy to give them, as was pointed out, it doesn't have an address yet. And until such time as it's further developed, it probably won't have a specific address. Basically, it's the corner of, it's in the middle of the big chunk of land on the corner of Brewery Hill and Airport Road. All right, I'll bring this back to the table, questions? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Daniels are bogging us down again.
I'll try to speed it up.
I will, I will entertain a motion for resolution three six six five.
Nope, three six six four. Nope. Oh, sorry, we moved on, I'm sorry.
I move to approve resolution number three six six five, resolution to accept the determination that the environmental assessment is appropriate for the FEMA bank stabilization project.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Daniels. This is, we had, we had the Public Works and Great West here last week, but this is basically just those, this is that bank revitalization project. And so this is just us formally, there's actually two related resolutions, accepting their assessment, and then the second one will be adopting their recommendation. Any other further comments at the table?
Should there be a location?
No, because it's just the, that they, the, the stabilization project itself defines that. I don't know that the resolution does.
Yeah, the bank stabilization project, that's like a hundred and fifty-five page document that goes through. This is just.
Is this, is this concerning Cooper and Ninth?
It's in that area, it's where they're putting back.
Or is it all along?
No, it's just, it's, I don't know if it gets eight hundred feet or, it's like, it's like some remarkably small length of land with a lot of digits in the price, but somebody else is paying for it.
Yeah, and I just assumed that it was Cooper and Ninth where the bridge, bridge not exist. But I didn't know if that should be in the resolution.
Because, so when they gave us these, these two resolutions were actually at the very end of that hundred and fifty-five page document. So I know that document states all of the information that you're, and that might be.
And I think if it's referring to it, then that's probably.
The, it certainly, it certainly council's prerogative to amend it. To, I hear Councilmember Conley's point is, if I'm going online and I'm looking, the idea is that you're supposed to be able to know really by the title. Is there a further, is there a further clarification that can be added to the title? Whether it be twenty twenty-four or Project X or anything that could be, do you have, could you access the, the long version of it?
Oh.
Does it have an identification number or something?
Did I, did I understand the preference correctly, just that some things that.
Ten years from now and people are digging these out, they're going to wonder where it is.
Yeah, I agree with Sandy. I mean, what if we just included that as exhibit A?
An exhibit A.
And then.
The final environmental assessment, bank stabilization, so in the therefore contained in exhibit A and then there it is. Does that meet your?
Yeah.
Now, what I, I still see an advantage, I still see an advantage if we can go to exhibit A and steal something from it for.
Yeah, and I would use that as a whereas, to where is, whereas the FEMA has identified this section approximately eight hundred feet off of the shore, north of Cooper or Ninth, whichever that, however they want to describe that.
It's a drawing or something.
Saying that this bank needs restabilization and these are the, the studies and the assessments that were brought forward by FEMA.
Did you have any left, Sandy?
The link is expired because they send you a big document and you have to have a link to get into it because they can't.
It's expired. Thank you. Government. So yeah, hopefully we can, hopefully there's a hard copy saved or downloaded.
We, we, yeah, we do have it and we have it downloaded.
I have it on my computer, but I don't have it.
Didn't we, I'm trying to think if it was in the packet, electronic packet last two weeks ago or four weeks ago. It seemed like it was in one of them.
One of our packets was sent to you under paper.
Yeah, and we tried to do that on purpose, actually.
You guys can table it until we can.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Sandy, and it should be a little bit more clear on what that's actually being approved to. Because even though some people have a frame of reference of where it's going and.
Yeah, and when we looked at it last time at Public Works, we didn't really have much context for that either. And I know Chuck, right?
Yes.
Was you, you explained, like you helped explain it and then.
Yeah, she was the explaining.
Yeah, and then Great West explained it at the city council meeting. But yeah, it is, it is a little bit out of context, I think.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I may too, the, the study that you are approving has a drawing on it. So in that study, there is a drawing of exactly.
Well, that's every nice there is exhibit A.
That's all the details, but.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is, is, and I'm hearing a combination, I was, I was hearing two potential motions. One to change the therefore that just specifically refers to the exhibit. And the second was to change the title just so it would be more, more accurate to do so. But then the, the third option that I've heard come up is just a move to table, in which case both of those things can be addressed by next time.
Yeah, I think regardless, it needs to get tabled until we actually have that exhibit. Yeah. One, posted to the public and two.
Would you, would you care to make, and there was also a public hearing on this as well. But would you care, and maybe, in fact, I think that's what it is. But I'm okay with it, there's, there's nothing on this that's time bound. They are, I don't believe the work was supposed to start this year. Chuck, was it, was it intended this year or next year?
The, it's intended as soon as possible, hopefully in the spring. The biggest challenge you have is that you still have to get it permitted. So the timeliness on your end, the council's end, is to get it approved that, yes, this is what we, we agreed to because you need the permit and the permit process could take quite a while. And that was when Ali Ben came in and said they weren't involved in this on the early end. So the sooner it gets to them, the sooner they can do it and the sooner Great Western can actually do something. Because as we all know, that bank between Ninth and Tenth continues to erode every single year. I watched it fluff it. This is probably more between Ninth and Tenth than it is between Ninth and Eighth. That, that already has that FEMA riprap in there. This is for the totally unprotected and continually sloughing lands, Ninth to Tenth.
Okay.
So I guess as my public comment, I would really encourage you guys not to table it because the environmental impact study did have the description in it. You don't seem to have anybody here having an issue. And so by, by sheer saying that we approved that, that project, it's in the project. So that's my encouragement.
I would move to include in the title that it's the eroded west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue, which resolution thirty-six sixty-six does describe it.
In the first whereas.
Or we could just say resolution to accept the determination that the environmental assessment is appropriate for the FEMA bank stabilization project at the, where to go.
At the intersection.
Yeah, at the, on the west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue.
So whole, basically cut and paste in the first whereas.
Cut and paste. Yeah, starting with west bank, west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue. And if we put that in the title of thirty-six sixty-five as an amendment, rather than table.
Okay, so would you like to put that in the formal motion?
I move to amend resolution thirty-six sixty-five, reading resolution to accept the determination that the environmental assessment is appropriate for the FEMA bank stabilization project on the west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue.
And do I have to say in the City of Red Lodge?
Nope, nope, I think, I think it's your, it's your motion, but I understood what you were saying. Is there any other first, other amendments you would like to make in that motion? All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie and a second from, I'm, sorry, Councilmember Conley and a second by Councilmember Daniels to add, to include west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue as part of the title of resolution number three six six five. Discussion at the table.
Makes me happy.
It makes Councilmember Conley happy. Any other discussion? Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Is council then comfortable moving forward with the motion on the original resolution? Any further discussion? Let me pause for raised hands or any audience input in the room or online, any impact or any additional comments? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on resolution number three six six five as amended.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
The motion passes as amended. All right, I will entertain a motion on resolution number three six six six.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'm making a motion to approve resolution number three six six six, resolution to adopt the FEMA stabilization project alternative analysis report for the City of Red Lodge, Montana, as prepared and presented by Great West Engineering.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Conley. Is there by chance a motion to amend the title to steal some language from the first whereas?
But you did, Sandy, you did it so eloquently.
Well, I'm not sure that it needs to be there because it's the first whereas.
Yeah.
It is the first whereas.
So I don't think it's necessary.
But they're not, they're not going to search on the whereas as you search on the titles.
Well, that's their issue.
No, no.
It is, it is.
We just made a big point of saying that there should be something that's easy to identify, so we should probably make a motion, so.
Make a motion to read the resolution to adopt the FEMA bank stabilization project on the west bank of Rock Creek at the intersection of Ninth Street and Cooper Avenue.
Alternative analysis report.
Yes.
All right, have a motion to insert the wording from the first whereas after bank stabilization project in the title. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, so just for officials, that was a motion from Councilmember Daniels, a second from Councilmember Tupin. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, let's do a roll call on the motion to amend, please.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, the motion to amend passes. Let's revert back to the main motion. Questions, comments at the table?
I really appreciate Great West handling all of that because we could never do that.
There's a lot of things that we're better off outsourcing. And I will make sure, as an action item, I'll work with the front office, this is the part where Lonnie's taking notes, to make sure that we have those. I thought they were already up on the website and I was not seeing them, so I'll make sure that we get them up there. All right, let me look to the audience, is there any buddy who'd love to comment on this? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on the original motion.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. That concludes the business portion of the meeting, the action items. At this point, what we'll do is we'll move over to council business for the audience members. This is the part where council talks about what's going to be on the agenda in two weeks and two weeks beyond that and just kind of getting things ready to keep the meetings nice and boring when, when Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Daniels don't drag them out. All right, let's start with public health, Committee Chair Conley.
Yes, we, the chief gave us a list of calls for service for September. There were over two hundred calls for service, twenty-nine citations, forty-three investigations ongoing. It's a very impressive list, fifteen suspicious activity complaints, ten disturbances, everything that you can imagine in here, including methamphetamine paraphernalia, seizing methamphetamine, seizing electronic devices used in criminal activity and seizing a firearm from either a felon or a new double felon. So that was very interesting. We got into the discussion of loose dogs and maybe getting a little more teeth into the ordinance. We do have an ordinance on loose dogs and how they're handled. We used to have an MOU with Grizzly Peak, that a loose dog could be brought there and be boarded and then the owner has to pay. And that the, if the owner was a no-show, it would go to there to humane to be, to be adopted. But apparently if the dog was hit by a car and Grizzly Peak felt they needed to utilize the animal, the chief had to sign off on it and he was very reluctant to sign off on somebody's pet. So we need to, it's an old MOU, so we need to dig it out and get it going again. So we'll probably end up with a resolution to sign a new MOU.
So I took from the meeting two action items. One is that we're going to make sure we go back and get those calls for service that we get a monthly summary of. We'll have those posted online so the public can go back and review those at any time. And the second one is to reach out to Grizzly Peak, find out where that MOU is, they have one. I remember from when I was on council, they also have a similar one with the county. And we'll work and, and as mentioned, as we get that ready to work out, what we'll do is we'll have a resolution. Basically, council will authorize the mayor to execute an MOU.
Okay, we also discussed maybe getting a second set of batteries for the portable food sign that we got posted in the south end of town. But two hundred dollars for another set of batteries may or may not be in the works.
It did, the chief did not feel it was, it was necessary. There's a, there's a short turnaround. There was, there was a discussion about the advantage, benefit of having that, that sign out all the time and moving. And so there was some direction given that we have it, let's utilize it and see it out there more. And he accepted that direction.
And we had further discussion on the school resource officer. There hasn't been a decision made yet by the school board. Lonnie, Danae, the chief and the mayor are working with Lexipol. Lexipol can be a grant writer for us. And we understand that because we're a member of Lexipol that we can have up to three grants written in one year. And that obviously, I bet a school resource officer is on that list, which would help as well. So we're, we haven't given up on the school resource officer.
And I'd like to add a comment because those, those two points are separate. There's the school resource officer, which currently we're just waiting for the school board, let me rephrase it. The school board president, the school superintendent, there we go, is what I was looking for, is waiting for authorization from the school board to do that. My understanding is they have that slated for an upcoming meeting to make a decision on that. But the chief and I have both independently reached out. what I was looking for, is waiting for authorization from the school board to do that. My understanding is they have that slated for an upcoming meeting to make a decision on that. But the chief and I have both independently reached out to members on the school board because the last we heard is that he was taking to the school board, so we reached out to see if they had heard anything, or they said they'd heard, but they had not yet made a decision, but it was scheduled in the near future.
And that, I mean, we did discuss fire departments, the renegotiation on their contract is up next year, so we will be looking at those most seriously.
All right, any questions from the rest of council to the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee? All right, hearing none, we'll go to Council Chair Ronnie for admin and finance update, please.
Okay, well, we are still working on our short-term rental ordinance and the business registration, it all kind of coincides together. We are asked from city staff was to incorporate into the short-term rental ordinance what has to happen before someone loses their registration. And we go back to, in the zoning, it lists the requirements for that, the public safety, you know, the fire, being within 30 minutes, all of those. So we felt that it was our responsibility in the ordinance to codify what was in zoning, and currently that is not there. So that there are clear guidelines so that everyone is held to the same standard. You know, our property managers in town always have someone within 30 minutes of, I was tasked with going back to staff to find out what happens, you know, what has to happen before the owner or the property manager is called, you know, who calls them, when does it happen, so that we can figure out how to codify all of that. Because you can't expect someone to show up in 30 minutes when they receive the phone call. So it's things like that, you know, if they are, you know, over, have too many people in, you know, the occupancy set, it's something, you know, how many times does that have to happen before they get a warning or before they lose the registration? So those will be some really good conversations at our next meeting, so if anyone would like to attend, please do so. Chris has finalized and sent out a copy of our Good Neighbor policy, which we'll be going to council probably, do you think it'll be ready in two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
Or it'll be up for?
Yeah, I just put it in the link, but it's actually, we changed the name, or we changed the name to Good Neighbor Guest Guidelines.
Yes.
So it's not so.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
You say guest guidelines, my understanding is that that document was going to be changed to everything that was in fact a resolution or an ordinance, in which case I would not call that a guideline, I would say them, the rules.
We can certainly, I've got it up right now, actually, so what do you want us to say?
What do you want us to say?
I would say you should have it be what is actually written in the ordinance.
Good Neighbor Policy?
Yes, it's the Good Neighbor Policy.
Okay.
Well, I don't know who changed it, but. I like that you're making it softer, but also, this is where we're going to be firm.
Right, okay. And so that, if you could add that to, for discussion at our next meeting, for council and then, because that is part of our ordinance, that we would have that, and we've never had that since we've had the ordinance, so we want to have that approved. And the annual review of the short-term rental will be coming soon.
Yeah.
It won't be ready until.
Do you have anything else?
We have a commitment that before the end of the quarter.
Yes.
The end of the semester. I will add, I had something come to me as mayor to make a determination on resort tax that has specifically to do with a nonprofit, Yellowstone Busines, in particular, and the confusion comes from, we have a couple of kind of conflicting statements in ordinance 952, which I would like the admin council to take up and look at, and I understand they're going to be, a lot of times that's done in conjunction with the resort tax committee, but in 244, it talks about where the tax is being applied, it goes through and it lists all sorts of things, and in some of those, it says, with the exception of nonprofit and fundraising events. However, when you go down to section 245, it basically says exempt from tax, schools and school events, tickets sold for nonprofits, used in second-hand items. And so the feeling was, I reached out to a couple of members, I reached out to the chair of the resort tax committee, as well as our council member on the resort tax committee, the feedback I got is that the intent was that nonprofits were not intended to be looped into this. There was some feedback from staff that said, you know, it's not costing the nonprofits, but the counter to that was, but it does put the onus on them to track and collect that information for resort tax, and that historically, it has not included nonprofits. I know as I was reaching out to the different events in town, the one that came up as the most comparable was Yellowstone Sanctuary, Wildlife Sanctuary, and they do not pay resort tax on the tickets on entrance or donations, but they do pay it on items sold in the gift shop, with the exception of educational books, which is again, going back to some of the language that's there. So with council's blessing, I feel fairly comfortable advising that YWS does not need to, there's some other related objects, but at this point, I'm inclined to say that they do not need to be collecting resort tax for their 501(c)(3) ticket sales, pending a couple of other pieces of information. But I look forward to council kind of looking through that with the idea of where is there possible conflicts and contradictions.
And the resort tax committee is that that is, we have, in that ordinance, it says we have to do that every five years, and we are at that five-year mark. So the resort tax committee is actually going to be tasked with, according to that ordinance, going through it and fixing it. So, and then we present it to council.
And you guys have to adopt it.
Have to adopt it. And I will say that it was always, I was on the committee the last time we did that, and the reason why it was written that way was we didn't want nonprofits to have to collect resort tax in their fundraising activities. Like they have a concert as a fundraiser, they shouldn't have to necessarily collect resort tax on that. But if they have a normal business, like a gift shop, they do have to collect resort tax on that. So our thinking was, if it's in their normal course of business, like a gift shop as part of it. So, I mean, and we can change that at any time.
So out of curiosity, would like the kids' corner to pay resort tax.
I believe that's second-hand items, so that's probably.
Unless, the only time that they would, would be if they brought in new t-shirts that said Yellowstone National Park or Wildlife on it. Because clothing is exempt unless it has, yeah, some marketing type logo on it, like or jersey thing.
Novelty.
And it has to be new clothing, used clothing is exempt, so.
And in fairness, like I said, if I were writing anything that I were bringing before this body for approval, I would want the input, so if you guys have additional inputs for Councilmember Ronnie to take back to that resort tax committee of things you guys would like to see, now's an appropriate time to bring those up.
If I am your representative, I'm the resident.
All right, are there any other questions from the rest of council to the admin and finance committee? All right, let's move on to land use and planning. Committee Chair Tupin, would you like to lead this conversation?
Yes, so land use and planning, we specifically just passed a few resolutions, and glad that we can make some catches on ordinance 911. We did have a pretty thorough discussion on pasture lease and trying to get that solidified and out for bid here in the near future. One thing that we kind of hit a stopping point with is, a lot of the people in the room have experience with agriculture, some of us have experience with residential, and there just seemed to be a conflict of what the terms should be within that lease. We're trying to get some more professional opinions on it, as well as some more examples, and do a little bit more due diligence to make sure that we are being cohesive with what other government entities are doing, and also make sure it works with what we are doing. So that will be another discussion that we bring up.
Yeah. So the goal for that is, at the next meeting in the council business part, what we'll have is the draft lease, and then with that draft lease in mind, also the draft RFP, and Council Butler will be providing a staff report justifying why he thinks, will be providing a staff report based on, for example, why he feels who should be responsible for taking care of noxious weeds within the property and stuff. He's got some past work with government land leases, and it seems like there may be a difference between government agricultural leases and private agricultural leases as well.
So we're doing a deeper dive on that, making sure that, again, do the homework. Then also, we have two resolutions that are up for discussion tonight, so Resolution 3667 Northwest Energy.
Those are going to be under Public Works, aren't they?
That's right, we moved that.
Thank you.
I'm just reading along through, so yeah, that was where we were at today, and we'll have some good future discussions coming up, so.
Any questions from council for the land use and planning committee? There was an additional question that came up for staff to research, having to do with the makeup of the planning board, and if we had the ability to change or specify that there was always going to be at least one representative from the business community, whether they lived within city residence or not. Right now, we have members on the business community that are on the planning board, we have one that is actually the council's appointee that happens to live within city limits, we also have one that's the county's appointee that happens to be a business owner within the city even though they live within the county, but that was just raised as an issue to investigate and find out what our legal options were, to help ensure that there is always at least some representation from the business district on the planning board. Does council concur or have any other questions, concerns, comments? Don't everybody speak up if I want to.
Well, the idea behind it, obviously, is that the planning board makes decisions on signage and paint colors and everything else in the downtown business district, and generally, the businesses in the downtown area are owned by out-of-city owners, so they've never had a say in it, they don't get to vote on city matters. So including at least one owner on the planning board, I think would give us great input on the planning board when decisions are being brought up and discussed. A different point of view.
All right, Councilmember Tupin, did you want to read the discussion on Public Works?
Sure, so I have a chain about Resolution 3667. We're having a discussion on that. So Resolution 3667, the Northwestern Energy Solar Grant Application for a solar carport that would be located over by the art guild and the public restroom. This grant would essentially build a carport that will help us get energy to actually power our EV charger that's over there already. So that was kind of the goal of that. One thing that we are finding is Mike Maples doing a little bit more digging, no pun intended, but on what the cost of digging will be in concrete and the actual install and infrastructure of this project, which the numbers rise pretty much every week, he's still trying to get a lot of those finalized. So one thing that we did want to do is leave this on the agenda for discussion today so we can potentially have an action on it that's following council meeting, specifically because these grants are due by November 1st. So it might be one of those things that we find out that the price of it is, we wouldn't be able to either come up with a match, or it just becomes an unreasonable project for us to apply for, but we'd like to have that discussion on the table and be forward-thinking so we're not getting stuck behind in case it is a viable option. We want to be sure that we're actually able to move forward and doing so the right way.
May I ask for a clarification? So was the recommendation on both of these resolutions that we do move them forward for action next week, and that they were not committal in nature, they were just basically a permission to submit?
Yep, exactly.
A grant, and we still have the option of determining that they were not feasible?
Correct, yes. So even if we take these as action and say yes, what does the grant, the mayor, the ability to actually apply for these grants on behalf of the council? But it is one of those things that hopefully by next council meeting, we'll have more solidified numbers and you can feel very comfortable moving forward with that, or it could even be something that we amend to say, you know, with city staff's blessing, essentially, obviously more appropriate language than that, but we just don't want to miss out on an opportunity. That also goes for Resolution 3668, Northwestern Solar Energy Application for Lions Park Restroom, that would be to put solar panels on top of the roof. There's a few other hangups with that project as well, specifically where the power is and where the meters are, are all on different buildings, but don't necessarily need to be there, so we would have to get a Northwestern Energy variance, be able to actually line them up, yeah, line everything up, so, you know. But the nice thing is, is Mike Maples is doing a bunch of work, Alan Betts has done a lot of homework on this as well, and brought forward these projects, and has graciously offered to write these applications for the city that we have been submitting, so. Anything I'm missing, Coach Air Keith?
I just, yeah, I would reiterate, this is just, these two resolutions are just authorizations to submit those, so we are ready to go if and when we want to move forward.
Right, due November 1st. Yep.
Coach Air Keith sounds like a concert event in the desert somewhere.
Yeah, that does sound like a fun now.
TJ.
And then, I understand we're also still looking forward to recycling center.
By the end of Christmas, or by the end of my career.
Before the end of the semester.
Yes, when I stop working 72 weeks.
Okay, are there any other questions from the rest of council for Public Works? I understand there was also a conversation started on the reserved space handicap parking ordinance that's there, anything notable from that, or are you guys still working at it before it's ready to bring to the council?
There's going to be a substantial amount of work.
There's a lot of work.
That one, that whole was first drafted by the, by our next Public Works meeting. So we really took a deep dive on that today, started reading through it, and just started making flash marks and edits, pretty major changes, pretty substantial changes, so we'll make sure to give a more thorough recap of that once we have a little bit more solid draft frame.
All right, any other comments for Public Works, or questions from the rest of council? All right, correspondence, does anybody have any additional correspondence that they wanted to mention as well, as you can always forge stuff on Delanie for inclusion in the packet, but anything to be brought up at this point in time? This is the hard part, because I was going to go, oh, wait, let me think over the last two weeks, right? All right, at this point, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is for anything within the council's purview, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open up that comment. If you would start with your name, again, if you would please address your comments to me, the chair, everybody else will eavesdrop, and remember, this is not a public discussion, debate, question and answer, this is an opportunity for the public to be heard by council. With that, I'll go ahead and open public comment.
Beth Hutchinson, as you probably know, I work for the Census Bureau. We do a lot of surveys constantly, so information about this in your hands to get people in town to recognize this legitimate is important. Also, when I'm doing these surveys, I'm becoming a repository of questions and complaints, and I'm going to pass them on because by doing so, I gather support from the people that don't want to do the surveys. The questions that come up in the last few weeks have to do with.
So you're saying we're the bait?
Yeah.
We're the life bait, okay.
Have to do with enforcement regarding weeds. Just today, I had some complaints about all weeds and grass and that they aren't getting taken care of, and in the past, I knew they were getting noticed and fines and stuff And then I also needed to ask, where there's a homeowners association, the city still has its ordinance about weeds and stuff there, right?
Okay.
And then the other big one had to do with the increased number of people who seem to be paving over the parking between the curb and the street. And with the addition of the stormwater, it seems really important to have that be clear because we're sending more mess down the stream. And so they were worried about enforcement on a number of places in downtown area that have been paved over. And then I have one really cute thing. I almost didn't get here tonight because of it. This man who lives out of town has an STR, and he wanted to have me listen for a really long time about how very guilty he feels owning an STR, and that he thinks he's going to turn it over to a long-term rental.
All right, thank you. I did my best to write down those notes, Beth, but if you would like to follow that up with an email to me at mayor@cityofredlodge.com?
Sure.
I would appreciate it, and that'll give me a better opportunity to follow up and make sure that we don't miss. And any additional information that you feel comfortable sharing with that, as far as reaching out to folks, I'll be happy to take action accordingly. All right, thank you. Next?
Hi, I'm Carrie Durbin, over on Haguen Avenue, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to give kudos to Mike Maples. And I walk my dogs regularly at Reowned Rotary Park, and about a couple of weeks ago, I was walking and I saw him sitting on a bench with a chainsaw. What I wondered what he was doing. And as everyone knows, that 19th Street Bridge, I know we can't use the dreaded D-word about all the rocks and stuff that are underneath the bridge, and we all worry. And I brought it up with the mayor, and I know he's looking into what might be done so that we have a little more comfort next year around the time the water gets high again. But I went over there to talk to Mike, and I said, so what are you doing? And there had been this large tree that I had seen in the creek for literally months, and I kept thinking, man, I hope somebody comes and cuts that up. And there was Mike, and he said, yeah, I was sort of thinking that that might be a problem, so I decided to come over here on my lunch and cut it up. And that meant a lot to me because he was just taking that extra effort when he saw something wrong to go over there and fix it. So anyway, I wanted to say kudos to Mike.
I would like to add, just for the curiosity of anyone who might be listening, this has been an issue that has come up several times, meaning the specific tree has come up several times during the year. And we've talked, when we had the floodplain folks here last week and we were discussing, we had the very specific conversation about how silly it was, we had to wait until it became a problem before we addressed it. The short version was, as we talked to them, we were advised that if we could go in and do it with a chainsaw and not any heavy equipment, that we could do so. So Mike was down there with his chainsaw.
Mike was like, I mean, how is he able to do that legally?
No, no, so we did, I'd like to clarify that we did have permission. We did pursue it. He may have been sitting there waiting for the tide to wash low enough that his boots didn't get wet, but we did receive, that is something we've been looking at, how do we address legally, you know, as far as, so we did have permission. It's not a forgiveness thing, we did have permission. But I feel better knowing that tree's not there, and there are some logistics I still worry about. Anything else from the room? Let me go to online if there's anybody who'd like to make comments. Again, turn on your camera, raise a hand. Double. All right, going twice, going three times. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And before I entertain a motion on item 13, I'd just like to thank the public for joining in and paying attention and being aware of what's happening in your city. I know everybody up here appreciates that additional input, and in fairness, a sense of appreciation for just knowing that people are aware of the time that's being put in. So thank you for putting your time in and coming to be part of the process as well. And with that, I will entertain a motion for item number 13.
I move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Pass it down.
Thank you all.
Pass it down. Pass it. You're blocking the break, but down there.